On tonight's warrant is signing of the, I'm sorry, on the agenda is signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the warrant.
I'll second that.
And I would vote in the affirmative as well. Next agenda item is approval of the minutes for the October 1st Board of Selectmen meeting.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
And I would make that unanimous as well. The next agenda item, ladies and gentlemen, is invitation to speak. And if you may allow me a few minutes, I'm going to read some guidelines of what I'd like all of you to, to the best of your ability, to adhere to tonight. To ensure the speakers are uninterrupted, only those speakers who are recognized by the chair will be permitted to speak. And any speaker shall, at the request of the chair, be silenceded. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. Your remarks should be confined to current issues under the board's jurisdiction. We have a lot of business to get to tonight, so we are only allocating up to 30 minutes total for all speakers during the public comment portion of the meeting. You are welcome to contact the Board of Selectmen in writing if you would like to offer comments but not, did not get the opportunity to speak. Or you may come to a future meeting of the Board of Selectmen to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. All persons addressing the board shall do so in an orderly manner. And we ask that you please make respectful, no slanderous, or irrelevant remarks, engage in personal attacks, or engage in any other disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, and otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of this meeting. If a speaker or other meeting attendees become disruptive, such that the board cannot continue to conduct the meeting, those people acting to disrupt the meeting may, if they fail to respond to my warning as chairman, be removed from the meeting, or the board may take a recess in this disruption till it ceases. Thank you. Charles?
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may just have your attention for a brief moment before we begin, begin the invitation to speak. My name is Charles Barty. If you haven't met me, I'm the new town council. And I just want to impress upon you a couple of things. You may ask, why is there a formality to this invitation to speak as opposed to prior meetings? Part of the reason for that is because we anticipated a large attendance and perhaps a large amount or number of people who wanted to speak. We want to give everyone an opportunity, and therefore, it was determined that one of the ways to do that would be to limit it to half an hour, and then to allow people to speak as they see fit in three-minute intervals. I want to emphasize again, this is an opportunity to exercise your civil rights, but please do so with civility. Don't attack individuals. All the comments, all the, all of the, all the public discourse that you may make is not a dialogue with the Board of Selectmen. The Selectmen have been advised by me not to be responsive because of the issues that are pending, so that any matters that need to be addressed in another forum may be done in that forum and not here tonight. This is your opportunity to speak to the board, not the board's opportunity to speak to you. That would be someplace else. The other thing that I would just say again is, exercise your civil rights with some degree of civility. Please understand, there have been some comments made that are personal attacks on family members, et cetera, and that's not why we're here, and that's not what we're here to, to hear you say. Obviously, any comments that you make are your own comments and your own views, but they should be done in such a way that they convey your message, and not in a way to excite or to upset people in their personal lives. So having said that, we will be timing this, the comments to make sure that we adhere to a three-minute schedule. There are apparently about four people who have signed up to speak. There was a, a sign-in sheet, so that people could sign up, and they would be heard in order in which, in which they've signed. If anyone wishes to sign now and have an opportunity to speak, that will be afforded to you. You can do so now. Otherwise, we'll begin with the first speaker. And I think that's it for the moment.
And just to follow up on that, it is my intention that I am going to go through, as the town attorney has made reference to, there are only four names on the signup sheet. When I get through the fourth person, I'll turn it back over to you, and we will go up. I will allow you, all the way to the 10th member, three minutes to address the Board of Selectmen. Okay? So we're not going to just go by the four names that are on here. We agreed as the board to allow 10 people, three minutes, and we're going to fulfill that commitment. So the first name on the list is Mike Johnson.
I actually have three copies of the petition, one for each of you.
I'll take those.
Give those to you.
Yeah, I'll take them.
I'm sure you guys know my name by now.
And again, Mike, as you know, you have three minutes.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Again, my name is Mike Johnson. I started the online petition for the chief. I'm here to present it to you, gentlemen. I know there's no legality in the petition, it's just simply a statement. And again, I'm adhering to the rules. I want to be respectful, I want to do everything the right way here, out of, you know, respect for the process. Don't, please don't, you know, mix my sincerity with the fact that I typed the letter. It all came from the heart, so with that said, I'll just go ahead and begin. I want to explain the reasoning behind my efforts. Again, my name is Mike Johnson. I'm originally from Tucson, Arizona, growing up in a career law enforcement family, a military family. That led me to work in high-risk security and join the military. I was in the Army for 10 years. I got out in 2015. I moved here to Milford, where I met my wife, and I have my family here. And I'm a very private individual, but I'm a very outspoken supporter of law enforcement and the leadership under Chief O'Laughlin. That said, I'd like to mention the issue at hand. My experiences with Chief O'Laughlin are not much different from hundreds, if not thousands, of others in our town. The chief has assisted me once in a professional capacity when I needed fingerprints done for my job, and twice Chief O'Laughlin was there officiating my wife's and my wedding. I've heard numerous stories about how Chief O'Laughlin has affected people's lives in this town personally and professionally. Gina Clark of Milford wrote, and I'm going to share a couple quotes with you guys, "He's the best chief around, staple of the community, a short but strong statement which simply states how the chief is viewed by our community." Another gentleman went as far on Facebook posts to explain how the chief helped him during his struggles with substance abuse, going as far as giving him a ride to obtain treatment. A final quote I will share with you comes from a gentleman who stated, "I lived in Milford from 1982 to 2012. I saw the changes that the town went through, including the police department. I remember when Chief O'Laughlin was being considered by the town. There were public meetings with the final two candidates openly interviewed and broadcast on TV. For all to see, the citizens of Milford deserve the same transparency." This quote brings us where we are today. Public safety, protection, and security is not a partisan issue, it's a community issue, an issue that every single resident of this town is entitled to the same amount of, regardless of who you are or where you're from. Under Chief O'Laughlin's leadership, MPD has been extremely successful in maintaining a safe community, one which has seen crime rates below the national and state averages since 2003. Additionally, Milford has seen its lowest crime rate in 10 years, and, and under Chief O'Laughlin's leadership, countless lives have been impacted in positive ways when dealing with the current opioid epidemic. Citing a June 28 Milford Daily News article, the chief referenced being fortunate to hear from those Milford Police Department, those that Milford Police Department has helped receive treatment. And this is only a small fraction of how the chief has helped our town.
Time is up.
I would have signed up for three minutes. I see my three minutes to my please. Thank you. As the fifth, as the fifth signer?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
What I have just mentioned is only a small fraction of ways in which the chief has impacted positive change within our town. An exemplary record is a police officer, a chief, and more importantly, a leader who has made a strong commitment to the community by what I perceive as the "be no do" philosophy of leadership. If you aren't familiar with this type of leadership, I suggest everybody look it up, because it's the epitome of what a true leader is. With all this in mind, hundreds of Milford residents, if not thousands and beyond, are now questioning this decision by our board to not renew the chief's contract. We residents who are familiar with the general laws of the Commonwealth and the town bylaws who, that regulate this board, are fully aware of your entitlement to executive session. However, when a decision such as this is made behind closed doors without legitimate reasoning or regard to every man, woman, and child that it affects, we have an issue. Now, I'm aware that when dealing with contract negotiations and bargaining agreements, it's very, it's a complex process. I understand that. I think everybody understands that. But I'm just asking that if that's the case, and an agreement can't be made, then somebody just owns that position publicly. We, the residents of Milford, are asking for three things, just three things. We're asking for the true reason that the decision was made in executive session, why the people were not provided a forum to have a say in the changes that affect public safety in our community, and we ask that the decision to not renew be reversed pending an attempt to re-entering renegotiations with the chief of police. I'm going to end with the following here. Using a famous quote, "There are things known and there are things unknown, and in between are the doors of perception." At this point in time, the perception surrounding this decision is veiled by a cloud of speculation and mistrust, and the board's ability to effectively represent the people of Milford and our will. This is a dangerous precedent for a representative democracy. The decision to not renew the chief's contract was the final straw in a long list of grievances from the Milford residents. If the board believes that not renewing the chief's contract is in the best interest of our town and its people, I'm advising now and at this moment, hundreds, again, if not thousands, of residents strongly disagree and have already begun to assemble for the purpose of a recall. And that's in accordance with our town bylaws. Make no mistake, gentlemen, we demand three things from our elected officials: transparency, accountability, and integrity. Those three things are severely lacking, and it's becoming more and more prevalent. We cannot have that as elected leaders, and that's all I have to say. Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that, especially, and thank you for your service. Next name on the list is Rachel Largie.
Hi.
How are you?
Hi there.
Hi.
Welcome.
Three minutes, that's not, leech, I can't do it in three minutes, eh? But I'm going to try, all right?
Yes, you can.
All right. What's the matter? Who? Who? You, him, him, you, you, hey, hey, you say, you, oh, you, and you're, oh. What are we doing in this town? Shameful. Shameful. I had more respect, now what? The chief, I can go to bed and sleep, knowing my town's safe, my grandkids' safe. I can walk in the middle of the night. You want to throw the best thing out of town? Huh? Wrong. Wrong. Shameful. Do it, yes.
Next name on the list, Maria Valencia.
I think it's going to take three minutes. Here in this room, you, you are so proud, so pleased, so glad for the excellent work the chief was doing for the residents of Milford. From one day to the next, everything changed. What happened? Do you have a friend for the job? Explain to us. But he was a good chief for 17 years. Mr. Thomas can continue to be an excellent chief for another two, three, or four, or 10 years. What you did was wrong, and what you did wasn't honest. Milford residents want the chief back to the job, and I hope residents of Milford stars see what you are doing in this town. Thank you.
Next name on the list is David Nolte.
If I had known that I would have the opportunity to speak, I would not have drunk at dinner. I was here at 4:30, I was cold, because I walked from my house on Draper Park, and I went back and ate. And when I eat, I drink, so that's probably what gives me the courage even to approach this august company. I live on 17 Draper Park. I am sorely grieved after 24 years in Milford. And I used to live in Detroit, so I was prepared for Milford when I came here 24 years ago. And I am sorely grieved and dissatisfied that a man like Chief O'Laughlin has been, hasn't been retained, and there's this mystery around. I thought I was coming here tonight for information, but I don't even know if I want that now. What I want is some kind of movement to bring him back, because, as I say, I live on Draper Park. I don't know if you know Draper Park, but it's really on the cusp of the good Milford, we all know what we mean, and I was, I wouldn't say the bad Milford, but the sad Milford, the poor Milford, the tenement houses, et cetera. I can claim one thing tonight, and that is that I have written Chief O'Laughlin more emails than anyone else in the 17 years he's been in Milford. He always answers them. He always comes when I call him to come to Draper Park. He is always there. I have, he is not, I wasn't raised in Detroit to, to understand the small New England town mentality. He understands it, and he has always been there for me, always been there for my neighbors. When I disagree with my neighbors, he's there for both of us. I don't understand what's going on, and I'm really depressed about it, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So at this point, I'm going to open it up to anybody else that would like to speak, and we allowed 30 minutes.
Somebody in the back?
Come right up.
I didn't plan on this.
That's okay.
I don't get it.
Please identify yourself only, because I identified everybody, so if you could identify yourself.
Yeah, so I'm Jenny Richard. My husband and I moved to Milford about three years ago. I am a young adult, and Chief O'Laughlin has done so much for this opioid crisis that personally affects my friends' families. This is a big problem, obviously, right now in the young generation, and the fact that he, instead of putting people in jail, drives them to rehab facilities, that's just, that should speak enough for his abilities in this town, so I just wanted to say that we support him, and anything you guys can do to rethink this decision would be greatly appreciated. That's all.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Your name, sir?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is David Gomari, and I live at 3 Kalen Circle in Milford. And I probably have to confess, I'm not, I haven't studied a great deal about this situation, except that I'm familiar with the exemplary service at the police department and the chief of police, Mr. O'Laughlin, has given to our town. I think it's been exemplary. And I wasn't clear, it wasn't clear to me what would bring about a situation where there would be an executive session that would cause a vote to go in a direction that I found to be unclear, totally unclear. And I think that's the reason why, what, what it started for me at this point is, is that I want to know why, like the people have mentioned here before me, especially the first speaker with his three points. An executive session, I understand that executive sessions are needed and they're important in some cases, but I think when it comes to a position like the chief of police, where we're all affected in some way, then we need to know, at least have an idea, as to what the reasons are for not renewing this gentleman's contract. And if anything, this is not an informational meeting, I don't think. It's a, like you say, a point to make our feelings known about this and what we think about this, but it's renewed my interest in finding out what exactly is going on and how I can be involved in the town to see that a good man is kept in a position, given the fact that he served for a number of years in town. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
In the back, yeah, Mike.
I'm 12, who knows what I think?
State your name.
Priscilla.
Last name?
Last name, last name.
Olivera. Um, I'm in 7th grade. All I know is that my, I've never seen my school on the news. I've never seen a horrible thing going on in Milford that has surrounded schools or has surrounded near schools or has surrounded children much. I just know that when I go to school, I don't worry as much as many other kids in, like the Florida or just other places. I know that I feel safe skateboarding to school every day, and I know that after school, I don't think of, if am I going to be safe going home? I think, what am I going to eat? And I just know that my teachers are all there to support us and teach us good things, and I know that, um, that the security is crazy, it's just, you need to make sure they have ID, that you, they know the parents, the students, they know everything, they keep in track of everything that's going on, and they have never just had loose ends. And I just, I'm just happy that it's safe, and I know that carrying forward till high school and then college, that I'll be safe in Milford. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi. State your name, please.
Marsha Montgomery. My family and I moved here to Milford 19, or 17 years ago, and so basically, for almost the entire time we've been residents of this town, he's been our chief. I would like to speak about all that Chief O'Laughlin has done for our schools. I have been a school council member for 13 years and counting, on basically every building in the school except for Brookside and the high school. I know two of you, I'm sorry, Mr. Buckley, I don't think you were on the, the committee when I've gotten up to speak, so, wasn't planning on speaking, but you know how hard it is for me to hold my tongue sometimes. Chief has done so much for our schools. As a parent, that has three kids, two that have graduated, one that's in 8th grade and heading to the high school next year. The, the implementation of the I-Team. To have that expertise in our town gives parents such a peace of mind, knowing that our kids are safe, and should they not be safe, there is someone here in our town, a team ready to be there in minutes to help them. That's huge, as parents. And not only that, just having worked on all of the councils and, and seen how the chief has supported our schools is really big, and it's, it's an example for other towns to emulate and, and to follow us. And I think to lose that piece of our community and, and to lose that leadership is going to affect our schools. And as three former school committee members, I implore you to think about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? It's your three minutes, so. Well, as chairman, I want to thank all of you for coming. I appreciate the support, and I will say this. I'm going to entertain a motion right now with my fellow board members, that we rescind the vote that was taken not to renew the police chief's contract, and that we go back into contract negotiations with the chief. We have time, there's no hurry, and so I'm entertaining a motion that we go back, rescind the vote that was taken originally not to renew the chief's contract, go back into negotiations with the chief.
Mr., excuse me, there's a motion on the table.
I'm sorry.
With that motion on the table, I appreciate the theatrics, Mike, but you know, as, as well as anybody else, we have a meeting in executive session to discuss with, with council, the collective bargaining process with the police chief.
No, Mr. Chairman, I just want, and, and quite a few of the comments tonight is the, the transparency fact of it. So I think that we need to go into executive session, still stay on schedule. We were reached out to finally, so I think that, that dialogue needs to take place prior to coming back in. So, things broke down, if things are going to move in a different direction, we at least need to have that conversation as scheduled.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody that came on this evening, thank you.
Can you explain what that means to us before we leave?
Yeah, I know.
It's a lot of political topics, you should explain it freely.
Sure, I didn't mean, actually, I didn't mean it to...
The chairman. You should address the chair.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, what was your question, sir?
Whoever can answer it, can you please clarify what was just said between all of you, so that we know? We don't know what you just said. You put a motion on the floor, you were told that somebody else...
Wasn't seconded.
...was in the board session, and I just heard something else.
Right.
I could have town council, could I?
Sure.
It'd be best to answer that. The chairman opened it up, excuse me, the chairman opened it up to entertain any motion anyone would like to make. No motions were made, no motions were seconded. The item is already on the agenda to be discussed in executive session, and the other two selectmen agreed that the matter is more appropriately discussed in executive session and after executive session. If a motion is being made, that's when it would be entertained. So for the time being, what's happened is, the, the matter has been deferred to the executive session, which is later in the meeting, at which point the board will meet with council, et cetera, and discuss the matter and make a determination if any action needs to be taken.
I appreciate that. Could you tell me specifically what matter is being reviewed?
There are several matters that are, that are on for executive session. Which matters will be discussed will be, will depend upon the roll call vote that will be taken by the chairman at that time. There are five or six matters that are on for executive session. One, one of them has to do with the police chief. That's one of them, but again, whether that is grounds for the executive session will be, depend on the vote at the time, later in the meeting when that's taken.
Okay, so how do we get? Excuse me, excuse me, I have a question. Could, excuse me. I have a question. Could, could something be voted on tonight if they chose to?
In executive session?
No, right here now. Would this be the proper place to vote it have been done tonight?
Well, it, it could have been done had there been a motion made and seconded, but there was no motion made and seconded. It was opened up to entertain a motion by the chairman, there was no second of any nature, and for lack of a second, the matter can't process further.
Okay.
Okay, I think we can. I think, thank...
Excuse me. So, just so, to clarify my own standpoint, what that means is, you offered to rescind the current position that the board has, and went up for a second, or for a motion, you denied the motion, so that...
It wasn't a second.
There was no second. It's not, it's not denied, a denial would be, excuse me, I'm sorry, but denial would be if a motion had been made, et cetera, and then voted down.
Right, so...
No motion was made.
So that you go back into executive session to discuss whatever the issues were at the time that the initial decision was made to not renew his contract. So we're going back to the beginning in which, whether it's collective bargaining, or conduct, or whatever the issues were that stopped you from going forward, we're back at that point. So my, my next question would be, do we refer to the minutes to find out what happened in executive session? How do we determine what happened?
Executive session minutes are not public record until such time as the matter about which they were, the, the executive session was called, is terminated or fully resolved. At that point, executive session minutes are then made public. The matter isn't resolved, it's still pending. And to, and to maybe clarify a little bit more, we're not going back, per se. They're going into an objective executive session... They're going into an objective executive session to discuss the matter. It doesn't mean you're going back to square one, it doesn't mean that there's any backwards motion, which is something that you suggested. It just simply means that it's on, they may choose not to go into executive session to discuss it, it depends if there's a motion made, and, and by roll call vote, seconded, and then by roll call vote, they all vote to go in for that reason. There are five or six reasons. They may choose to go in for all, or may choose to not go into executive session at all, or may choose to go in for one, two, three, or more of those.
So it's all...
At which point it will be discussed, the, the matters since the last meeting and the last executive session and the last vote will then be discussed, and if there's any action to be taken, it will be announced in public session.
Can I ask you a question? When can we vote to have more selectmen on our board? Because our three is just not cutting it.
It's not, it's not an appropriate discussion for, for this item, for, for this evening.
It's not tonight, I can't say that. I'm tired of it. I just did.
Yeah, we all did.
But that's what we got to do, town.
Yes, sir.
Will you tell me, please, when you said you'd entertain a motion, who's able to make the motion? Anybody here or just you three?
Just the board, just, just the board.
And that's you?
Just the board.
Did you use...
Three of us.
That's not fair, though.
May I ask another question?
One more.
Is there some reason why the announcement was made in the newspaper instead of, uh, is that the way the chief of police found out about his not renewal?
Sorry, I didn't understand.
Was, was the announcement in the newspaper, the way that the chief of police was informed that his contract...
I'm, I'm going to have to interject here. One of the ground rules was that this wasn't a dialogue and that they're not to respond, and I say that to you respectfully.
What can I ask you as a lawyer?
You can ask me, but I'm not going to respond to the question at this point.
This is a hell of a situation, isn't it?
Oh, I see, so it's all in the hands of the devil.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
Good night. Yeah, good night.
I was in the parking lot the other night when I was walking to my car.
I didn't throw you out.
Yes, you did.
What's that?
I gotta go out. I'll catch up.
I will. I will. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, take care. Thank you.
You gotta go, no, wait, okay, you gotta...
We've got business, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. I know you do, thank you.
The rest is all your own business.
The rest is just agenda, right? Okay, thank you.
But it's, but it's your meeting, if you chose to stay or not stay. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. They're your chairs and this is your building.
Well, you gotta, you gotta sit back there, but we got people coming up.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
Although one second kill you, just going to announce public hearings and there are none. Let's get the room quiet down and...
Shut the doors. You guys shut the doors, please? Yeah.
They're trying now.
Next agenda item is public hearings, there are no public hearings this evening. Next agenda item is scheduled appointments. This evening, we have our benefits coordinator, Kelly.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good day.
Brian Boyle, Jr., here with me, our advisor.
Good evening.
From the letter that I sent to the board, um, you can see, I'm just here to get the, um, to ask for a vote on our senior plan rates for 2019. We had, um, a very good renewal, um, a small increase of 1.66% on our Blue Cross plan and, uh, 0% on our Tufts plan, so I was pretty pleased with that. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Yeah, Kelly, this is the lowest percentage increase that you brought us at any time.
I keep trying to get them lower.
And I know you're working hard at it, and I know Brian helps as an advisor, but I just want to say thank you for, for working hard on behalf of the retirees and the employees to get, you know, a 1.66% increase in healthcare costs is, um, you know, just outstanding work, and I want to thank you.
Thank you.
No, I don't have any questions. This is a no-brainer. It's a relatively easy, a lot of work. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, Kelly needs a motion, and so I'd like to, uh, structure it this way. Um, I'd like to approve the insurance rate approval for retirees. Um, that was identified by our benefits coordinator, Kelly, on the October 18th, 2018 memo that she outlined, and consistent with that, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous.
Nice job.
Kelly, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Good night.
Good night.
And Brian, thank you.
Nice job, Brian. Thank you.
Next agenda item is old business, is Bill, do you have any...
Town administrator.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Rick, I was skipping right over.
That's okay, that's not a problem. Thank you. Uh, just three items tonight. I just want to update the board on the Wendy's Corporation drainage issue. Uh, as the board knows, the Dill Street Drive access has flooded during heavy rain and was rendered impassable and has been closed on several occasions. We have been working with representatives from Wendy's, um, to basically fix this condition. Uh, we have been informed that Wendy's has awarded a contract to a construction contractor to install a new underground detention system. Town engineer Mike Dean has been working with them on this project. The design plans have been approved by the Conservation Commission. A pre-construction meeting was held on October 18th, um, and a plan was developed. This will include police details, uh, will need to be in place once the work begins as the rare access drive will be closed, and so they will have to, um, obviously facilitate traffic. Construction is scheduled to begin on November 2nd. They expect to finish up to the binder pavement by December 14th. Uh, final finishing pavement will be done in May of 2019. Um, they will begin working closely with both our town engineer and police and fire so they'll make sure we have proper access also during the construction phase. Two other items, um, one, just a final item on the Central Street properties. Um, the board, I'm sure, knows the vacant area on Central Street has been loomed and hydro-seated, uh, by a private contractor, Busy Bee Landscaping. Uh, I want to thank the highway department, they provided the loom. Um, barriers are in place to help prevent washout. Also, the graffiti on the remaining building has been painted over. I want to thank, again, facilities director Carlos Benjamin for overseeing the project, and again, highway surveyor Scott Christopherly and his crew for delivering the loom and therefore lessening the cost to the town. Uh, the final item is the weed control on Main Street. Uh, again, I hope the board knows, the initial weed control was completed, again, by Busy Bee Landscaping, from Restaurant 99 to the island just past the lights at the hospital before the Hope Dale Town Line. This did include the cutting back the brush in the Sacred Heart parking lot. Uh, and again, I want to thank facilities director, uh, Carlos Benjen, for overseeing the, uh, project. Uh, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, uh, the, the only thing I can say is that, uh, I'm glad that Lake, Lake Wendy is being addressed and, uh, uh, everybody knows when that closes, everybody has to exit and cross, uh, across, uh, 85 and across, uh, four or five lanes of, uh, traffic. That presents a hazard to the, the folks in that area. Uh, Central Street looks great, Rick, thank you for following up on it and the weed control. Uh, I got a call this weekend, uh, from somebody on Central Street saying that just with the graffiti gone and just with the looming and the seating, how much improved it is.
They did a nice job.
Over the buildings that were there, so, uh, nice job, and thank you for following up on the, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Rick, I'd just like to say thank you to you for getting right on that project, the sidewalks, and, uh, they are, they, they, they really did a nice job. They were out on a, on a Sunday morning, you know, still working, um, you know, and the, the sidewalks, in my opinion, that were the worst, were the ones from the intersection of 16 and 109 up to the 99. I drove by them again tonight, they're very passable, um, but as you come down through Main Street even, you know, the weeds that were on Main Street are all gone, so, great job, great job, and thank you for your work on, uh, on Wendy's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is old business. Any member have any old business?
I do not.
No, I'm fine, Mr. Chairman. No old business.
And neither do I, as well. Next agenda item is new business. First item under new business is... Milford High School Boosters Club permit to obstruct for a 5K Thanksgiving morning Permit to obstruct public way.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to move.
I'll second.
They do all the time.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Milford Performing Arts One Day Liquor License. Milford Performing Arts Incorporated, 150 Main Street in Milford. Entertainment Cabaret, Milford Performing Arts, again, 150 East Main Street. Will be a cash bar.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, to approve.
I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous. Next is the Milford BFW Permit to Obstruct Annual Fundraiser, the distribution of the military poppies. I have a motion to accept.
Move.
Second it.
I would make that unanimous. Next is the Friends of the Milford Upper Charles, a gift, uh, in the amount of $50, Anne Marie Faniff, uh, to the Milford Upper Charles. I have a motion to accept the gift.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next is Police Chief Signs at Congress and Blanchard Road. I'll read the correspondence from the chief. I received an email from Mrs. Lori Fanning Zaka concerning vehicles failing to stop for pedestrians at or in the crosswalk at Congress Street and Blanchard Road. Observations of the area show that there may be an issue with motorists being able to readily identify that there is a crosswalk at this intersection. Given that this crosswalk is utilized by local residents, pedestrians walking along Congress Street, and children going and coming from the Brookside Elementary School or the Milford High School, I recommend that the Board of Selectmen have the Highway Department erect signs forwarding motorists in both, forewarning motorists in both directions on Congress Street that there is a crosswalk at this location.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
And I would make that unanimous as well. And the last item on new business is Department of Veterans Permit to Obstruct the Annual Veterans Day Parade. A motion, please?
Moved.
Second it.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next agenda item is correspondence. First item of correspondence we have, "To the Milford Board of Selectmen, I regret to inform you that due to medical reasons, I must resign from the Geriatric Authority of Milford effective immediately. It has been my honor to serve the town of Milford and the Geriatric Authority. Sincerely, Salvatore Semino."
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept with regret. Mr. Semino has served in, in many capacities, uh, for his community, both selectmen and state representative, and, uh, again, at the Geriatric Authority, and I know I've missed a great deal, but I would tell you, uh, his service has been invaluable to the community, and, uh, again, with regret, I'd make a motion that we accept.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Rick, you'll make sure that we get a...
Absolutely, yes. Yes, we will. Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Next correspondent is the annual license establishment report. I don't think we really have to go into that, but this, ladies and gentlemen, this is a report that we get from the police chief. Uh, it's an activities report on all the restaurants in town and, uh, any violations that might have happened. Um, it's very thorough, and, uh, we thank, again, the chief for doing this for us. Any member wants to comment on it, or...
I didn't see anything in this report that was, uh, striking or something, we'd have to bring someone in for.
No.
No. We don't need a motion on that, Rick, right?
No, you do not.
Okay, thank you. And we have another letter of resignation. "The Board of Selectmen, dear members of the board, please accept this letter as my resignation from the Milford Conservation Commission. I am thankful for having been able to serve as a commissioner for more than 25 years, and I'm happy to have served with so many talented people dedicated to being of service to the town of Milford. Respectfully yours, Robert J. Buckley."
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, again, he highlights, Mr. Buckley, uh, highlights that, uh, has been a commissioner for 25 years and has served this community, uh, on the Conservation Commission with, uh, great expertise, I might add. Um, and while no, no relation, same last name, um, you know, I want to just make sure that, uh, people understand how important Conservation Commission has been throughout the years in making sure that bylaws and state laws are followed, um, and I would, uh, make a motion to approve with regret his resignation. He'll be missed.
No, I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well, and again, Rick, you'll make sure that we...
Yes, yes.
Next agenda item is executive session. We will be going into exec, executive session this evening to discuss town council settlement with, settlement with allied waste, discussion with council regarding the Carroll versus Milford case, discussion with council regarding police chief contract negotiations, discussion with council on potential release of executive session minutes, and town council collective bargaining. So, we will be going into executive session, we will be returning to open session, but we need a roll call vote first to go into executive session.
Move, Mr. Chairman, I'd support that and say aye, support that.
I second that. Aye, we're going into executive session.
Say aye as well, and we will head into executive session, and then, as I said, we will return to open session. You are good to go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, we are back in open session now. We are tabling the discussion on the establishment of the police chief selection committee until November 5th, while the board awaits a response from the chief to his last correspondence to the chief in March of this year to determine if further negotiations will be conducted between him and the Milford Board of Selectmen.
Okay, with, uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, um, I'll make a motion to adjourn. That's everything on our agenda this evening.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous. Good night, everybody, and thank you for watching.
All right.